Let's just, we'll just double check.
Good evening and welcome to the September 11th, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. Please note that this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both in person and with remote connection. And I'll read you a few points on that in just a moment. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. It's all right to record the meeting, but we need to be notified. I don't see any hands raised. So regarding the hybrid format pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it's or you may also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is in the agenda that's posted on the town website. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, which was formerly Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So before we begin, let's take a roll call of the board. Bob Wurzhafter.
Present.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Megan Story.
Megan Story, present.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, present.
Bob Dubis.
Bob Dubis, present.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I am present. I'll also ask, although I don't think this will be the case, does anyone need to recuse themselves? There's nothing really that could be recusable, so we'll go ahead. The first item on our agenda are the minutes for the August 28th meeting, and I just wanted to check.
They're the right minutes, the wrong date on the top.
The header is incorrect, and also Bob was nominally here.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. We just wanted to check that. So these are the correct minutes from the August 28th meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or additions?
Other than those, no.
All right, great. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the August 28th, 2023 minutes as amended with the date and Bob actually being here in person.
I'll second him.
Great, thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Bob Wurzhafter.
Bob Wurzhafter, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
And Megan, you were absent.
I abstain.
Thank you. And Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Bob Dubis.
Bob Dubis, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda, we had a planner's report. Ryan Christenberry would like to begin to do this for the board, just keep us up to date. However, Ryan was called away this evening, so I think we have to omit that agenda item for this evening. But it is something we'll do regularly, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is our long-range planning. And again, we're looking at the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And this evening, as we discussed in our last meeting, we specifically want to look at the inclusionary and incentive zoning for housing for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And we have Gloria McPherson here, who's our Housing and Sustainability Director, who will cover the points on that. You received in your packets a staff memo with a few points of the revised recommendation, which was from Gloria and Ryan regarding the inclusionary zoning. At the end of our last meeting, the board had some comments, and Gloria made some suggestions that the board seemed to like. And so I think the memo outlines those recommendations. There are also a few questions for the board that we should go over. And in addition, after our discussion this afternoon with Gloria, Ryan, and I, Gloria was kind enough to put together the actual wording, suggested wording that we will insert into the draft bylaw, provided that the board agrees with the current revised recommendations. So I'm actually going to ask Gloria to just review the revised recommendations, which were based on our discussion in our last meeting.
Sure. I placed a hard copy of a memo at everyone's seat so that you could follow through and see the actual language. I think that's very helpful. One thing I want to note is that, actually a couple. So the first section, Purpose, I just excerpted two items that specifically relate to housing, inclusionary zoning, affordability, and stuff like that. And then the second and third agenda items, not agenda items, but bullet points, would actually be Section 7 and 8 in the actual draft of the zoning bylaw, not 2 and 3. I could not get the word formatting to let me do 1 for purpose and then 7 and 8 for the others. So just for, just for your own notification, if you go to look at this, as it falls within the draft of the West Chatham Neighborhood zoning, Purpose is Section 1. Mandatory provision of affordable and attainable housing for development of new residential units is Section 7. Kind of bump that up. And Section 8 is density. So let's just take everything point by point. So Purpose 1G encourages the creation of a range of housing opportunities attainable to year-round residents of all income levels. And H specifically speaks to inclusionary. Provide a mechanism by which residential development can contribute in a direct way to increasing the supply of affordable and attainable housing in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center by establishing a 20% inclusionary housing requirement. Now, as we go further down, we're going to actually have incentives for greater than 25%, a density bonus, and that's in a different section. Do you have any comments or suggestions on the Purpose and as it relates to housing and inclusionary?
Charlene?
I like how you worded G.
Okay.
I think that is a.
Yeah, that's great.
The wording there is very good.
Thank you. Warren? Warren.
Gloria, this is Warren. Just for clarity here, under the Purpose, is this the, is this Purpose essentially covering the entire zoning bylaw for West Chatham Neighborhood Center, or just this section?
Oh, for, so the Purpose section, and there are six other items before we get to G and H, is specifically for West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. It's not like, it's not the whole town, even though it's inclusionary, but it would cover like all of those different zones within West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
Thank you.
Call from Jennifer.
Okay. Let's move right on to Section 7, mandatory provision of affordable and attainable housing for development of new residential units. It sets a threshold of two units for this 20% inclusionary requirement. And because, you know, 20% is one out of five. So if you build fewer than five units, if you actually build a unit, it ends up being more than the 20%. So we wanted to kind of accommodate that lesser development model by allowing a developer, instead of, you know, building up a partial unit, which is impossible, to create a payment in lieu instead. And so tried to parse it out. So for the development of two new dwelling units, the payment in lieu is equal to 40% of, we use the average cost of a unit in the development based on the building permit application, which is probably like lower than the sale price. So it's not like we're going to take the sale price and do that. And the other two for the development of three dwelling units and four dwelling units, it's all just math. It's like the 20% times the number of units, and this is how you get the 40, the 60, and the 80%. And I know at the last meeting, we had talked about, like, all the different ways that you could calculate that. It could be based on the affordability gap. It could be based on, you know, the average cost of a one-bedroom unit. It could be based on a bunch of things. But in talking to Catherine and Ryan this afternoon, and also part of our discussion at the last meeting, we were proposing that that payment in lieu is going to be based off of the average of the cost of a unit within the development that the developer's actually doing. So if it's a really high-end development, that payment in lieu is going to be more than if it's like, you know, three one-bedroom cottages. And like I said, basing it off of the building permit application would be a little bit lesser than by sale. Because one of my biggest worries is that when you're only building two units, that's, it's very, it's a very small project to subsidize even a payment in lieu. It's possible even to do like, you know, a lesser percentage if you wanted to. But this is like the strict math. I don't know if you have any comments or suggestions or.
Yeah, Arthur?
Well, I just, just wanted to understand, follow through the, the numbers and that. I like the concept and the way you're approaching it, because by the time you get to four units, and if it's 80% of the average, it's almost worth it for them to build that unit, is what I'm, what I would take from it.
It's getting there. And so, which is good. One of the things that we were talking about, but I'm not, we're not parsing out so much here, is that there's always the possibility of building like small units, like one-bedrooms. If someone's building a bunch of three-bedroom units, it might be worthwhile for them to build, you know, a small one-bedroom rather than pay the 80% of the cost of like larger units. So it really is like a good strategy for potentially getting units actually built. And when, in the density section below, we talk a little bit about the size of units, but we didn't parse that out here. So it's something to consider. As we, as we go through, I think you'll understand more what I'm, what I'm kind of getting at.
The, the other thing that we had talked about is, is, all right, after you get to five, now 6 through 10, is it clear that the same process works for 6 through 10?
For the, so.
That's a different process.
That could be clearer. Well, not if they don't do a density bonus. That could be clearer, because right now it says for 2, 3, and 4. But really, we could, we could put a line and say for any partial unit created, there's going to be a partial payment in lieu.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we're expecting, you know, if they built, they built the one unit, and they're at 5, and they're deciding to go to 10, the same principle applies, correct?
Right, if they're under 10.
If they're under 10.
Exactly. But above 5, yes.
Okay. So I remember us talking about that. I'm sure you'll come up with better wording than the way I've just defined it. But I think, I want, I would want to make sure it's clear to anyone who's reading this, that you don't get away with just one.
Correct. I will definitely work on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Gloria, just for clarity as well, what, we have had discussions about who the permit, Special Permit Granting Authority should be, and the board had always said we should be. Is that still the assumption?
So there's a section that Ryan added to the zoning, which I did not include here, which makes the Planning Board the permit, Special Permit Granting Authority for any special permits within the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. That said, I don't know that just the mandatory provision of affordable units, the 20%, would require a special permit. It's not written in that way. It's written that if you get a density bonus for 25% affordables, then you need a special permit. So this would be, and that actually speaks to Art's original comment, that we need to make this crystal clear, because if there's not going to be a special permit, just site plan review, we want to make sure that we capture all those partial payments in lieu.
Okay. Not sure if I have an issue with that or not, but I think I may, because the intent here of having us being the Special Permit Granting Authority was multiple. But for me, one of the most important reasons was because that was to be the vehicle by which we could have special conditions for that particular application that would ensure that there would be no rentals for less than 182 days permitted, for example. But that in particular was one of the special conditions I would wish to have. And that should, that would apply to any development. Or I would wish it to apply to any developer's application. It's also, I think, important that we give some consideration for what other special conditions or what criteria would be used by the board for granting special permits, and on, and/or what other requirements might be customary for the board to consider, and to somehow ensure that both the metrics, as well as the possible requirements, be elaborated somewhere, in a footnote, in a note, you know, something such that five years from now, when all new people are sitting here, they wouldn't have a clue what the, what was really going on. I don't know what the right place to ensure that those criteria and potential regulations or requirements might be. But, but I certainly would, would like the, the Special Permit Granting to apply to any and all applicants. You know, even if they're plain vanilla, and it's just rubber stamp it, there's nothing really exciting about it, you would still wish to have that there, such that you could, for example, ensure that you, the condition would be all rentals, no rental of less than 182 days would be permitted, period.
So Warren, are you, are you suggesting that all developments in West Chatham require a special permit? You're not suggesting that.
Except single-family homes.
But single-family homes are not permitted.
Exactly, yeah.
Single-family homes are not permitted, correct?
Not per 40B or. Which is just outside, so takes it outside of the zoning. So I just want to understand, are you suggesting that everything has?
No, just the residential is what I.
Yeah, the residential.
Just the residential.
I'm glad Charlene has that face on. So I was, I was also not aware that single-family homes were not allowed.
No, they're not allowed.
That I knew, but I thought we were going to allow, you know, a certain number of units by right, the five.
Yeah.
Without a use special permit.
Yeah, that's why.
By site plan, in which case the board could impose condition, special conditions through the site plan process.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to make everything a special permit, then nobody's going to do it.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking, Warren, what is his intention? I'm trying to, yeah.
I'm not sure I appreciate the distinction between having a special permit with requirements versus merely requiring that they.
The special permit has, has other.
As part of the site review process, put conditions. I'm not sure I understand the difference.
The difference is the site, is a site plan review has a large set of other components that would be applicable, that would prevent someone from, potentially prevent someone from actually using it. Whereas if it was just.
Site plan review.
Yeah, sorry. Special permit has those, that's what I meant. Site plan review is much less cumbersome.
Yeah.
Again, I'm, I'm not vetted to anything, except the concept that, as Ryan had elaborated back in one of her work papers, that the, the way to have the Planning Board have the authority to ensure that a housing developer's plan would be restricted, or the units would be restricted to rentals of no less than 182 days, or whatever else, was through a special permit. That was her term. That's the only reason I missed.
She was talking about like a, like a conditional use permit, but I can't, I can't remember the term. It wasn't a special permit. I mean, there has to be something that you can do by right within a zoning district. Like, you can't, you can't literally put a special permit on every use.
If I could just make a comment on your memo, the last point on the memo that you received in your packet said, "Staff are inquiring through town council about special permit conditions for year-round leases." So I think, if I may, Warren, you're actually bringing up a separate issue. It's the issue of year-round residency, or restriction of rentals to, you know, 180 days or more, which is something that still needs to be vetted through town council, as I understand from our discussion this afternoon. What we're considering here are the inclusionary zoning measures that Gloria is proposing that we put in place in the draft bylaw. So for the moment, I'm not saying that we're going to leave it out of the draft, but for the moment, we do need to leave it out of this discussion. Because I think you're consulting with town council, or Ryan is, has a question into town council about how to best address those issues. So if we, if we could.
No, that's fine. And I, I said special permit, but, you know, the work paper was talking about special conditions being able to be imposed.
I think that's what's under consideration.
That's.
Yeah, I think that's what.
I, I'm just, I'm just very sensitive to the whole idea that. that we not end up creating an, a wasteland of rental properties that people own for investment and nobody lives there. And whatever we can do to ensure that doesn't happen or makes it onerous for it to happen, I'm in favor of. And unless there are special conditions that this board can impose on a developer's plan to ensure that rentals of less than 182 days, that's my favorite one because it means you're up by definition a permanent resident if you are renting in that period. I'm not wedded to that, but I'm wedded to the concept that we make sure that these are not just four to 10 or 12 per acre of investment properties to be rented out by the day, week or month. So, but anyway, but no, I'm sorry, I was using the term special permit as opposed to special conditions being the way to try and get at that issue.
It may be special.
Exactly where and how, I'm not sure. I just want to make sure that it's not forgotten.
No, we, I know that we talked about it this afternoon and, sorry for not understanding what you were saying. Because when I hear special permit, I think, a very specific thing. So there is question about whether we can do like a year-round residency restriction on things. We'll parse that out through town council. It may be that you can't do it on special, you can do it on special permit, you can't do it on site plan review, or maybe you can't do it at all. It's still, it's still up in the air. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that Julian Seer submitted some special legislation for year-round occupancy restrictions. So that hasn't passed yet. Like that's, I think that that is going to be, what's going to be the most helpful to this board if that does pass, that we can put those types of restrictions on. But right now, there's not really a mechanism that we're able to use that would allow us to put a year-round occupancy restriction on something that's not tied to affordability. So if it's not like 80% AMI or below or 100%, then you really, if it's not deed restricted for affordability, you can't restrict it for year-round.
And there's a distinction between short-term rental and somebody just buying it for themselves and only coming three times a year. We, we have no control over how, how much it's occupied right now. That, that's a different subject altogether.
Yeah.
No, I'd agree with that, sure.
Yeah, Charlene.
This is a thought that came to me last night when I couldn't sleep because my husband was snoring. Because I had read this before I went to bed last night again, to be prepared for today. And one of the things is if it is, you know, you have multiple units on a single parcel, the only way to sell those individually is through condominium, condominiumization, which is not an unlawful way to do it. One of the concerns or questions I had is if you have an affordable unit in a condo association, there's going to be condo fees. So that, like I said, this is one of those things that popped up in my head at midnight last night when, when I wasn't sleeping. So I, I'm not sure how to get around that. My guess is, is that if somebody does conduit, the original developer would probably retain that unit and that developer would eat those costs as part of keeping it affordable, but I'm not sure. I know they've done it, I just don't know how it works well, in all honesty.
Yeah, Megan, or Gloria, did you have a response to that issue? Have you had experience with that?
If you do have the multiple principal uses, multiple dwellings on the same lot, from a rental perspective, I don't think that's an issue because you have one owner of the parcel and everything. I think you're right that if it's, if it turns out to be ownership, it would have to be condoized. You know, some homeowners associations don't have big fees. You can always write your homeowner's regulations to do like a smaller percentage for an affordable unit depending on what the AMI is. Yeah, there, there are ways to address it.
Yes, Megan.
There are definitely ways to address it because that's what happens sometimes when you have a 40B that's in that situation because they're not frequently looked at in this vein, but that's the same thing happens. And I worked a long time ago in condo management and saw that there were specific condo docs designed with like a 1%ed, maybe not 1, usually 5% of average fees. Like there, there are ways that they write those. So that as long as, again, it becomes a part of the discussion that happens at, not a site, not a special permit, but some sort of.
Yeah, I actually, we did some documents like that. I used, I actually used to do land development out in Western Mass. And one of the things that we were really careful about is when you do the reduced percentage for the fees, it's really important not to reduce the percentage of the vote so that they have equal say in what happens. Just a little, a little aside.
Yeah, Arthur.
Okay, so I want to go down this path of site plan here for a little bit. And this might be a Ryan feedback, but I want to put it out there for the board members. So we have a site plan. Site plan, it's, it's, say it's a large enough site that you have a business on the front and maybe residential units in the back. Business in the front, if I build a certain thing according to what it, what it describes in the uses in here, use table, they're permitted as a right, okay? Now, the residential units in the back, or even above, could have either special conditions or special permit depending upon how the whole thing is structured. So those would be the ones that we would be applying some conditions to and not necessarily everything on the site. Am I understanding that the right way? And that's the way we would be dealing with this whole special condition piece?
I would understand.
You can definitely differentiate between the commercial use on the property and the residential uses.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So the only thing, actually, when I was looking that up, I noticed that it's either special condition or special permit for anything that was residential, the exception of one thing. It says multi-family dwelling, including townhouses and duplexes, it's just permitted, but there's no special condition or special permit associated with that. And I, I'm assuming we would want to have the same conditions there on that.
Yes.
Say hard with respect to that word.
It's just permitted. And where's the other?
The others are right here. See, they're all, they're all special conditions, special permit and special conditions.
This is what we had come up with. Because we, I believe we wanted to encourage multifamily, so we weren't going to put any conditions on it. If they can, if they want to build a, a multifamily.
Okay.
Building, they're allowed, they're allowed to do it. We, they still have to meet all these other conditions.
Okay, all right. I, I just want to understand what we're doing or not doing associated with some of these.
And it would still require site plan, however.
It would.
Yeah, right.
It would, it would require site plan review.
Okay, all right.
But we are saying that if they, if they invoke the density bonus, that, that would require special permit.
That's, that's the proposal in front of you.
Oh, okay, so that, that to me is the trigger, that's good.
Yeah.
Now I got it.
And what this, what I think Gloria is showing you that without invoking the density bonus, it's pretty clearly defined.
Yeah.
What they need to do vis-à-vis inclusionary.
Yeah.
It's clearly defined, and then they would also go through site plan review where we deal with all the other things. But they can do that by right. But if they invoke the density bonus, which by the way, is a pretty big density bonus, you know, to go up to 12 units from five, that's a, that's a big plus for the developer. Then the special permit, then it would be, require a special permit. So that makes a lot of sense to me, anyway.
We have to take notes on all this so that when we have our, our public meetings and we can make sure that it's clear and that we flushed a lot of these things out.
Yeah, I, I think it's been, and it's, and also it's just been, I think, very thoroughly reviewed and considered by Gloria and Ryan, who are really very capable, professional people. So, so good, so let's go on to the next, yes.
I, I just, I, I'd like a little clarification on, I, I buy an attainable unit and 10 years later I get transferred somewhere else, I need to sell the property. How, what is the restriction on the sale and how does it, how do we? I mean, clearly, it's appreciated in value. Do I get, how does that work? Can you just give us a quick, not the every detail, but a little bit of better understanding on how that works?
So these would be permanent deed restrictions. There would be a rider on the deed that says specifically that, you know, this house and property is purchased at, you know, whatever it is, 115% of the area median income. So therefore, when it's sold, it has to be sold for no more than 115% of the area median income. And at that point, you would do, you would use the HUD numbers from whatever that year is in the future and figure out what 115% of the area median income is. And that would be used to calculate the sale price. And typically, when you sell a deed restricted unit, you sell it through a lottery, just like you would do for affordable housing. And yeah, it would all be managed that way. So yeah, so it would appreciate, someone would end up with a property that's worth more than what they paid for it. But they couldn't sell it on the free market for, you know, a million dollars or something. They would have to sell it so that it was affordable to someone earning 115% or whatever the deed rider says.
Okay, thank you.
And that would apply to attainable as well as what we call affordable with a capital A?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, great.
And affordable is easier in that respect because there are a lot of companies and nonprofits that actually run lotteries for those. So that would be a really easy thing for someone just to, to do. Attainable, we're still figuring that out. I think that initially, unless other communities do the same thing and there's like a need for a nonprofit to start doing that, I think that the Town of Chatham would be doing its own lotteries for those.
Okay, good. And maybe now, would now be a good time to ask the first question of the board, which is on your memo, which is, in all of these cases, and I think I know what the answer is, but let's ask the question. Do you want to focus strictly on attainable housing above 100% of AMI? Or require the first unit as affordable, 80% AMI, while subsequent units can be built as attainable?
I just want to clarify that affordable housing or attainable housing is above 80%.
Above 80%, okay, sorry. So is there yet another option that the board could choose here?
I, so I know from discussions in the past that there's been the desire to create attainable housing specifically, especially because, you know, as we go through development of these properties that the town has purchased through the RFP process and has transferred the use from, you know, whatever municipal use to housing, we have the opportunity to create affordable housing there. And attainable housing is trickier to create because there are fewer subsidies available. So it's harder to build without additional financial input from the town. So if you wanted to focus on attainable, you could definitely do that, although personally, my concern is that we also don't have enough affordable housing. We're below 5% of our housing stock, which, you know, our goal is to get to 10% so that we have a little bit more control over potential 40Bs, but we're not even halfway there. And it's possible to do like that first unit at 80%, which is what I proposed. That way you get like something on the subsidized housing inventory. And then after that, you know, however you want to like distribute that affordability or attainability, you can do it. Charlene, also, and I had a general question about like, just in general, when you talk about inclusionary bylaws and everything, it really does refer to affordable housing. Like I don't know anyone who's done an inclusionary bylaw that is strictly for attainable, so.
Charlene.
If we have a deed restricted affordable unit, 80% or below, and it's rental and the entire property is rental, does not each unit count towards the, the, our?
No, just the, just the deed restricted unit.
Is it?
Yeah, it is.
I thought for rental, it was the whole shebang.
It is not.
Okay.
It's only the deed restricted one.
But I think, you know, what you've proposed is the first unit shall be affordable to households earning 80% AMI and second unit shall be affordable to households earning 100% AMI. Additional units may be affordable to households earning up to 125% AMI. And I'm just asking the board if this is an acceptable and comfortable way to define this. Megan.
May I call, because I'm probably going to sound dumb, but do you mean each project the first unit would be?
Yes.
I have, I take issue with that, I think. Because we as a town are, and again, my, my viewpoint might be skewed, but we as a town are trying very hard to create affordable housing. And much of the money that we can access for that is capital A, right? So I don't necessarily want to force it all to be ca, you know what I mean? I just feel like this is an opportunity for attainable. I see what you're saying about the inclusionary bylaw though.
Affordable?
So much of what we can do from, from the affordable housing trust perspective is 80% and below because of where the money comes from. It has to be 80% and below for much of that money. So it shifts my perspective on this, I think, being on that trust, knowing that that is there and that restriction lies with a good bulk of that amount of, of that initiative. But I don't know, I mean, I could be swayed either way, but I just, that's my concern, is that if the town is, is going to try to focus on capital A for now. But I see where you're coming Gloria, I see your face because you have no poker face, just like me. And, and I do understand that an inclusionary bylaw should be inclusionary. My argument with that is that it's still inclusionary in my perspective, but.
Okay. The original draft actually did not include affordable. It was all attainable. That's why that question is worded that way. Do you want to focus strictly on attainable? And then in the, in the tightening up of the language for this memo, I was just like, all right, this is what my recommendation is. But, you know, it could go either way. Maybe you start at 100%, maybe you do like a, or even 90%, like do a lower level attainable. So, because you don't want developers to come in and all max out the bonus at like 125%. You want to try to get like those different ranges. So maybe, maybe it's not affordable at 80%. Maybe it's attainable at 90% or attainable at 100% as like your first unit so that you make sure that you get those lower ones. And then maybe, maybe then after that, you can take out that second bullet point and just say additional units may be affordable up to 125.
Yeah. I think we could do that.
I, it, it raises a concern because none of that definition in our earlier percentages was, was specific about what, what it is. So we're going to, we're going to make people do 20, 20%, but if we don't have this second one here, much more specifically defined, everybody's going to make that 20%, 125. So I do think we need to have something here because we need to tell them the first one is, whether it's 80 or, or 90 or 100, it, I, you're, you're right, we have to have.
Exactly, you have to hit some of those lower ones. Because it's always going to be more cost-effective for a developer to build like to the highest AMI possible because the affordability gap is smaller.
But, but the, the formula to me is overall, I mean, I'd rather see somebody build three 125s than one, 180. I mean, if, if, if he can, if he or she could work out a, a deal where, oh, I can, you know, I can give you almost all of them being attainable at 125, but if you make me build that 180, then I can't, I can't make this project work. So I, I, somehow there has, somehow we have to get 20% of the, or 25% of it has to be at some level, but.
Can I just?
Yeah.
I think it's critical and I, I, maybe it's, again, I got this weird bias because I sit in meetings where we talk about AMI all the time. A family of four, the 80% limit in, in Bardsville County right now is $96,000. That is two people making. That is two people making 40 grand, paying for groceries, paying for cars. Like 125% of the AMI is not, I'm going to just rent to rich people. Like I think we just need to be really, and it's a lot easier, I shouldn't say a lot, but it is easier for people to find housing at this moment in Barnstable County when you are 80% and under. I am, much easier. I am strongly, just, I just, I know I sound like a broken wheel every time, but like, I just, I really feel strongly that we pay attention to what the numbers are because it's easy to think, okay, it should just go to the person with the least. But the person with the least actually can access a lot more. And there's still a massive gap at that 125% or 100%.
So what is your suggestion specifically?
That is why I feel that we should not limit it at 80%.
Okay, so you're saying the first one shouldn't be 80%?
Because in Barnstable County, when you look at this as a whole, there are more, there is more housing at 80% and below when you're considering big A and little a than you, than there is above. So yes, the state mandates or the federal government, whoever mandates that we need a certain amount of capital A, right? But that doesn't mean that that other piece isn't needed, it just hasn't caught up legislatively yet.
Exactly.
But Megan, we, we need to keep the builders an incentive not to just build at 125.
See, my point is I don't think there's a huge incentive because there's more money out there even for builders.
I understand, that's 125, but.
No, 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 you didn't let me finish.
What about 100 versus?
You didn't let me finish.
I'm sorry.
There's more money out there for builders, the less.
80 and below.
Exactly.
But only at 80 and below. So, so are we gonna, are we gonna, nobody's, we're not going to have any 100% AMI restrictions?
Well, they're still counted in that 80 to 125.
If we don't restrict, if we don't make them count for 100, at least for their first one.
I think it's too picky to pick, to do some at 90, some at 100. I think you have 80 and below and 125 and below as your chunks because otherwise you end up with all this middle stuff that like, oh god, if I make $2,000 more, I'm not going to qualify.
We're never going to have 100.
That's okay though, because they're going to qualify for the 125 and they can probably afford that a hell of a lot better than they can afford the $3,500 apartment that's currently available.
Okay, I mean, that's one way.
Oh, sorry. Whatever, then they know me at this point.
So my understanding that we delete the second bullet and just leave the third one in. Am I reading that right?
Really, the, it's almost like, yeah, it's almost like there is no real like distribution of affordability. It's more like you can build units anywhere up to 125% AMI.
So we just leave the third bullet in and take out the first two?
Yeah, and take out the word additional, just say units must be affordable to households earning, how about between 80 and 125% AMI?
Okay, that's good.
No, no extra bonus for building one at 85 or 90?
Just, it's only, it's, it's, it's only 25 grand as a family. The difference between 80 and 100 and 100.
And you're not?
Oh, not even, yeah.
But if you're making 90, if you're making 90, you won't qualify for the 125.
Yeah, you will.
No, you won't.
No, you won't.
No, it's just, it's a thin band.
It's, so. No, if you're making 125, you wouldn't qualify for the 90. But the flip would be true, if, if, as long as you're under the 125.
You're never going to get the mortgage, is what I'm saying. You wouldn't qualify for the 125.
This is rental though, yeah.
Well, it's purchased too.
It's condos too, isn't it?
It's any, it's, we need, we're asking for them to build a house that's affordable for somebody making $90,000 a year. And if we don't put in a restriction that some of them get built at, at 100 AMI, they're all going to be built for people who have incomes of 120,000 a year. I, it's, it's better than it was, and I get that. But the realism, the, the reality is, no builder is going to ever build anything but 125 AMIs to qualify. They're just not going to, they're going to put, they're going to go right to that level, they're going to make it, that's what they're going to sell them at. Even if they're, cost them less, they're still going to put the 125 AMI on their, on that property. Because that's the, what they can get for it.
I don't disagree, I just don't know if it behooves us to have like a bunch of bands, although maybe it does.
Well, it, it means that they will be restricted, the builders will be restricted to build some units at less than 125. And if we want to have that insurance, we have to require it in the bylaw. So if we want them to build the first unit affordable to households earning 100% AMI, we have to specify that in the bylaw and additional units up to 125, then we get, we ensure that we get some differentiation. Or if we, and that was the purpose of also including the 80%. So, that's the idea, because I think Bob is right, that the developer would go for what's most financially advantageous. Yeah, Bob Dubis.
I don't know if I'm going to say this right, but, so we have one, one apartment or whatever, building structure at 80. Have them put one at 100 and then all the rest can be 125. So at least you get two that are a little bit more affordable out of the section.
Which is exactly what Gloria has proposed. Yeah, that's what's been proposed. So, so that's the question I'm asking.
That's, that's, that would be my, my thought, and I think that goes along with Bob a little bit that.
Well, I was going to agree with Megan that we, we don't need the 80. We need, let's start with, the first one's 100 and everything after that can be whatever it is.
The thing is that, you, you have to have one that, that, young, I mean, I'm seeing young people right now that can, can't even pay a thousand dollars a month for rent, okay? And they're working. And they just, circumstances, you know, are keeping them in a hole. So I mean, we're trying to make, this is, to me, is for the young people are, to, to come here and, and get a start, okay? And on the other side, I, I might be wrong, but I thought that the, the Habitat houses, when they go, they, don't they, I think they, every year that they own the house, a percentage goes up. It's, you know what, I'm not, I'm not quite clear of how they, you buy it, it's restricted. But I thought that maybe, that it's a percentage every year that, you know, maybe, say, half a percent or something when it goes up to be able to turn it over. I, I don't, I don't know if that's right.
No, those are, those are deed restricted. And typically Habitat builds below 80%. Right now their mandate is only up to 80%. There are some habitats across the country that have gotten special permit, permission to build up to 100%. Ours hasn't, but typically they build more at like 60 to 65% AMI and then it's permanently restricted at that particular percentage.
I, I just brought that up, I didn't mean to throw a monkey wrench in.
Okay.
So, are we okay with the 100 for the first one and then, okay.
So, okay, so first one 100% and then after that, anywhere between?
I'm okay with hers too, even, I just.
80 and 125?
No.
Which will be more like.
Yeah. I think I'd like to pull the board just to. Yeah, so, so what's before us? Let's just, if we could just pull the board, and if we have to take a formal vote, we will. We want to look at Gloria's proposal, which began with three bullet points. And I think now we're proposing that we amend it to just the last two, is that correct? But I, but I want to hear from each board member what you think.
So, Megan just whispered to me and I finally understand what you were saying. I was trying to follow you, but, yeah. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but what she is suggesting is that the first two units have to be at 100% and any additional units can be up to 125%.
Okay.
Is that, is that what you were?
What do you think Gloria?
Yeah, it's more of a compromise with what Gloria was saying. I just, it's, I like it because.
Even, even the first one at 100 and then the rest at 125 would be fine.
Then that's fine, yeah.
All right, so that's what's before the board now, is that, and that's an acceptable revision Gloria, as far as you're concerned?
I think so.
So I just want to pull the board. First one at 100% and anything after that is up to 125%. So, Mr. Dubis, are you all right with that?
I'm not for that. I'd go with the two at 100 and the rest at 175.
125.
125, sorry, 125. But, well, no, I'm, I'm going to, I want to see.
So you want the first two at 100?
Yeah, I want to see, and I'd like to see it less, I'm sorry, but, but if the board goes with the two 100s and then the one, two, three 20, 125s, or however many after that, that's fine. But, but I, I, I would like to see one at 80, one at 100, and then the, then the 125.
You'd like to see it the way it is on the current draft, okay?
But I would go with the two hundreds if I have to.
Okay, and Charlene?
I'm more partial to the first two being 100 and the next one being 125.
All right, and Megan? You're, you're okay with the first two at 100?
Yep.
Then after that, up to 120, and Warren?
I think I'm, I'm in bed with Bob Dubis on that.
Okay.
I would, I would like to have some at the very lowest level possible because that's the, that's a huge need.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, technically you can do 90%, 100% and then whatever.
Yeah. Does that make any difference? What, what do you feel about doing 90%, 100% and then up to 125?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. And then Charlene's okay, and then Megan's okay with that?
I'm fine with it, I just want to point out, because my biggest argument is that there's a lot out there. If you are 80% and below, there is more available to you. So the 90, I'm cool with the 90.
But maybe that would be an incentive, you know, because there is more available for developers to incorporate.
No, I meant for the people, not for the developers.
Okay, great. All right, so, and Warren, would you be comfortable with 90, 100, 125 and Art?
90, 100, 125.
Okay, and Bob?
90, 100, 125.
Okay, and I'm going to go along with the crew.
Madam Chair, can we go back to the all zones residential density shall be five dwelling units per acre? That's not worded right, because you're saying it has to be, you shall. Should it, should it say something along the lines of residential density?
Where are you reading?
This is the number eight that, on her thing is number three.
Oh, there.
Yeah, all zones.
Residential density shall be 25.
When you say shall, you have to have five.
That's what your original draft said, it actually said a minimum of four units per acre.
Yeah, so, but I'm suggesting something maybe.
Oh, so a minimum of five dwelling units per acre.
Residential density may be up to five dwelling units per acre, except as provided for bonus density.
So that's different than what the original draft was that you guys have been talking about, which, I mean, granted, we went from four to five, but it used to say the residential density is a minimum of four units per acre.
That's what we discussed.
So if you have an acre, you have to build.
Say a minimum of five units per.
You have to build five units.
Yeah.
If it's residential.
Okay, all right.
Yes, so, so we want to put that wording of minimum back in there. And we do want to say shall. And then they get this marvelous bonus, which is pretty amazing.
So wait, 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 so it's not, so it's not a minimum of five units per acre be, because then they, that would include a density bonus. So if you're allowed to build more than five units per acre.
You don't want minimum or maximum, it's period, you build five.
It's just five units per acre. So, yeah, I had a, I had a hard time with that wording when I was, when I was relooking at this because it's forcing people to build a minimum, which I appreciate because we want greater density.
That's the point.
Lots can be really different. They can vary in shape, they can vary in topography, they can vary in like wetland buffer area and all sorts of things that would make it less than five units per acre.
So I have two, two changes.
It can't be a minimum because then if you can build more than five units per acre, why are we doing a special permit density bonus if they can just build whatever they want?
So, so it.
Maybe a minimum of two.
The restriction is five dwelling units per acre of buildable residential property. Buildable, or up, whatever it is, because if it's a commercial, if it's a commercial property and they build above it, they don't have to build five units on a commercial. So this is restricted to, this is restricted to land that's being used for residential only. And when it is, it has to be five per acre of.
Upland.
Upland, upland.
Of buildable upland.
Yeah.
Right. Now I'm confused, because you could have a commercial development where they may want to put 10 apartments there depending upon the size of the commercial.
Right.
So, that, they're using the prop, they're using, they're, yeah, well, see now. How do you, how do you count the property that's above the commercial as sep, I mean, that's the problem. We want to, I always encourage that.
I would just not consider commercial and just say you've got land, you have to put residential on it. And we also have a commercial requirement. But otherwise, how do you parse that out? Do you say like the first x,000 square feet is commercial, the rest is residential? I'd rather just give a, give a residential requirement.
No, but we have a, we have a restriction on, on, on portions of the, on the road that they have to have a, a commercial.
Right, but residential above or behind. But just because you put commercial on the road frontage doesn't mean that you don't count that lot area for your residential calculation.
Okay.
That's, that's the key.
And that's why I'm trying to figure out, would any units above the commercial have to meet?
Yes.
The requirement?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Because all, yeah, all res, it's just looking at it, it's just almost like taking out the commercial piece and just looking at the lot for residential.
We've just had this discussion that you have to build five units, yet under the mandatory provision of affordable for development of two units, but you can't build two units because we're saying you have to build five.
Well, the lot's less than an acre, yeah.
So are we, so we are prorating it that if you have, and I guess that's a good question, if you have less, if you have half an acre, how many units can you build?
Two.
Two and a half.
Well, it looks like two and a half.
Yeah. Okay, so I, that I don't think is entirely clear, to be honest with you.
Well, it is clear, but it's not, it's not great. It's not great, it's not great planning. It's hard to force like a minimum number of units. I mean, it's easy to put a maximum number, but it's hard to force someone to build a minimum.
So the number of units allowable on something less than an acre would be prorated?
Yeah, because we're doing our density by, by acre.
Okay, I, I think that maybe needs to be clearer because I don't think it is right now in all honesty.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know what the intention was behind that. Because when I, when I took this and changed this from the minimum to it shall be five dwelling units per acre, like the idea of a minimum of five units per acre, it used to be four units per acre, doesn't make any sense to me at all because you're forcing people to build where the topography or the lot shape might not allow it. And by putting a minimum, you're saying that they can go beyond that. But if they can go beyond that, why bother with the special permit? So you really can't, you really can't, it can't work the way it was originally written. But what was, what was your intention?
I don't know, I came and weighed on this.
I think the intention was, when it is a residential only proper, property, that it would be five. I don't see how it works that it has to be five on a property that has commercial mixed in there because you're going to, you're going to force people to.
I don't see how it can work on a residential property either.
Yeah, I don't either.
You just don't know, what if you have a weird shaped lot?
That's why I said upland.
That's why I say buildable upland.
How do you define buildable? That you can put a circle that's, you know, 360 feet in diameter on it?
That's exactly how they define it. When we get our site plans, they have these wonderful circles on it that show us that this is that amount of buildable upland and that it meet, the lot meets the tire.
Throw out things that are unbilled.
So that's exactly how they define it. So that's exactly how they define it.
I don't care, you know, if it's marsh, we don't wanna, we can't count that as part of the acre.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think we're counting for this the right way, because when we take a look at a site, and we run into this all the time, and if they have a building or have two buildings, we take a look at the uses, how much parking are you required to do because of this commercial use, do you mean? How much parking do you have to do if you have a residential component in this? And then you gotta take a look at the landscape requirements that we have. Now, we're talking about also, you're pushing this to the side and to the rear, alright? That's going to say that some elements of this property are not going to be buildable for anything, alright? Depending on, so, I'm not sure how you can put a requirement that says you have to do this most residential if the site can't accommodate it because of the type of uses that you have. I can understand how a commercial can go on there and they put one residential unit on top and nothing else. Why, why wouldn't that be acceptable? I, I'm getting confused by all of this.
I mean, I guess the question is just like, what, what's your goal? And like, what was the intention of the original wording that required a minimum of four units per acre?
I think the intention was to not have developments that put one unit per acre, or two, because we wanted to increase the density to increase the housing stock. I think that was basically the intention.
So maybe let's do a range, maybe do a minimum of two, but no more than five units per acre?
I think that undermines our purpose.
I'm, I'm putting my planner hat on, I'm just going nutty. Um, there shall be no more than five units per acre, nor less than two units per acre, kind of, or the other way around, except as provided in the density bonus provision.
That makes sense to me.
But it does mean that they could just build two, and I don't agree with that.
Then they, then they would have to do the 40%.
But they could be two-
I don't agree with that, I think-
Two big houses on a property.
Yeah.
And pay their, and charge $3 million each for two houses on a property. I think our intention for saying that was, if, if it's gonna be residential, it has to have a density of, we said four, but now five. That's, if it's a residential only property and it's an acre, we wanted five units on it. That's what we're trying to say. We don't want four or three in those cases. That's what, that's why we had it. Now, it, as I said, when there's commercial on there, or a park, or something else, uh, we, we obviously have, we, we don't want five, but we don't, well-
No, I think we still want five.
Well, I, I think there's a trade, we have the ability to trade off, that if you put a park there, we don't, you don't need to put five units there, or something, or if you put more parking in-
We don't have, we actually don't have that ability.
I know, we should have that power.
I, I just don't know, I don't know how you can shoehorn that in. It's not necessarily gonna make it work on every single site. As you said, there's upland areas, there's conservation restrictions, there could be all sorts of things. I, I just don't get it.
But that's why, but that's why we're adding the wording per acre of buildable upland.
Well, that, that would be appropriate, right?
And the other thing we could do is-
So that means if, if I have a two acre parcel and one acre of it is only upland, then the only thing I'm counting for is this, that one acre, nothing else.
Yes.
That's two acres, maybe I can put a park there or something like that.
That's all you count now, anyway.
Yes, that's exactly how we work around.
Under zoning right now, it's buildable upland.
Yeah, that's exactly how it works.
I just, I just don't want us to force something that can't physically happen, that's all I'm looking at.
But that's, and that is the way, I mean, Charlene is correct, that's the way we define lot size now.
Yeah.
20,000 square feet of buildable upland, 60,000 square feet of buildable upland. So it's the same thing, and that's why, you know, you see those wonderful circles on the-
Yep, yep, got it.
Okay.
So do we, I, I think that's right for residential only. Now, do we need to have a restriction for commercial, that there at least is some density for, for commercial, even in the comm, in the commercial?
The commercial's already required in certain, you know, certain zones.
Yes, but it, commercial, we, it's mixed use, so what's the, what's the mix? Do we have a restriction on that, or do we not?
Not every zone is mixed use, is it? Within the neighborhood zone?
The ones that are mixed use.
Just Zone A1 is the only one that's required to have a-
That's required.
Yeah.
So, if you have an acre, you have to have five units, based on how this is written?
Right, you have to have five units.
I'm saying no, for, this is only applies to residential only.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with what you're saying.
That's not, that's not what this is saying.
That's what it says.
It's not what it says, and it's not the intention.
Well, yeah.
It also, it would also include those parcels that require commercial. In that case, they would have commercial plus residential, but the residential is still gonna be based on the buildable upland area, but, like Charlene was saying, they do have the option of building above the commercial, so you're not losing that buildable square footage, you can put residential above.
Yeah, Gloria, you know, my recollection is pretty clear, it may be incorrect, but it's quite clear, that what we intended to do was to, one, restrict or eliminate single family homes, so residential is multifamily or mixed use, one or the other, there'd be residential pieces of both. The assumption was if you're building, my assumption was, if you're built, if you're gonna allow multifamily houses only, or a lot, then a builder is gonna put as many as they possibly can into whatever lot you give them to build on. And we want to increase, but limit the maximum number such that it's not outrageous. So, we said no, we've now come up to, well, we're going to limit it to really 12, right? Um, and the assumption was that a builder is gonna put as many units as they can sell on a given lot. So the limit was meant to be just that, the maximum number you can put. There's a minimum of, uh, since you can't build one and they're multifamily, you're gonna have two units, by definition, if you're gonna have any housing, if it's multifamily, which is what is required anywhere in here. Um, and of course, um, we've tempered that, I think, a little bit by suggesting that we're, as a board, in favor of having a transition area between R20 and the Neighborhood Center, to be able to allow smaller, uh, single family homes. Um, and, and with that tempering, uh, I'm all the more in favor of saying, no, what we wanted was multifamily homes, and we're gonna limit it to how many you can put, so that we don't have the, uh, the, the density backlash, which we need to recognize exists in town. Nobody wants increased density anywhere, period, right? And so, it's, it was really, we don't need to require a minimum density, no, it was, we're gonna allow people to put a lot of houses there, and we're gonna put, put the maximum number.
No, I just-
That was my understanding of what we intended, so, right or wrong?
That, that makes sense to me. The old draft said a minimum of five dwelling units per acre, and it was just very unclear what the goal was.
And I totally disagree.
Yeah, I think that was our intention, was to have that minimum.
Yeah, I, I totally disagree with Warren, because I can put two very large houses on an acre and sell them and, and meet everything you just said.
Yeah, and, and that was the kind of development we wanted to avoid.
Yeah.
So, I, I think it was the intention to set a minimum, yeah.
Well, I, I want to go back to, we're going back to our original premises. Uh, Village Center, alright? We need a commercial component, we need a residential component. If one is more dominant than the other, then, then we don't, it doesn't work. I don't, if, I mean, what you're, what I'm hearing here is almost such a dominant residential component, that I don't see how somebody is even gonna be able to put any commercial on there and make it work.
I totally agree, that's why I think if you put commercial on there, you no longer have five, it, the requirement is not five.
Right.
If you're, if you're, 60% of your, uh, space is commercial, then, then you would only need, then you would only need two house, uh, well, let's see, 40% would happen.
You could get, you could get four units in a commercial building.
You could get four, yeah.
You could get five units in a commercial building, okay? You could have three up on, on top of the commercial building and, and three in the back, or two in the back.
If, if they could, if they could put two billings on there, two of them are commercial and, and some residential components on there, but if, if their focus is a little bit more commercial than residential, I don't necessarily want to actually force them into putting so much residential that the commercial's not gonna be supportable.
You gotta remember one thing, we're talking a lot of land, there is not a lot of land out there for what you're, we're proposing, okay?
Talking about one acre of upland.
So it's almost a moot point.
Yeah.
There's very little bit of land that this is gonna affect.
Yeah, but, but it, unfortunately, this affects every piece of land that would be developed.
That's right.
So we do have to work this out. If it's only an acre-
Right.
And some, and we're requiring that some of these properties have to have commercial, we certainly have to take away from that five for whatever component of the commercial is, is part of it. I, so I, I don't know how to do that. I mean, I-
I disagree with that, because if you can build above it, you're not losing any land area.
Right, right.
Right? It's the same, it's the same square footage that's buildable, it just happens that some are built on the ground and some are built on the first story. First story meaning one up, and second, second story.
I, I agree with Gloria on that one, I don't think, I don't think that by stating, I mean, in this version of the draft, we required the minimum of eight units per acre.
Well, yeah.
That's where our thinking was.
Right.
But, but then we realized that we didn't have the build-out analysis that would support that right now, so then we went to four units per acre, and then we realized the percentages work out better vis-à-vis the inclusionary zoning if we would go to five units per acre. I agree with Gloria that I don't think requiring the minimum of five units per acre is compromised where there's commercial, that the, the residential units can be put above the commercial.
I don't either.
Wait a minute, there's extra parking now that's required? And, yeah, on that acre, when you're, you're commercial, it's already got a certain number of parking spaces, you're gonna put five more units on top of that and, and get 10 more parking spaces? I, I disagree totally that you, it's just as easy to do. It's not as easy to do, there's a trade-off between having a, some of that commercial and, and, and changing the density requirement. It, there has to be an overall density that we're accepting, and if it's all residential, then it's five units, I get that, but if it's the same piece of property and you're forcing me to put on a commercial space that's in the front, and, and I have to have parking behind it, I can maybe get two or, two or three units on there, but I certainly can't get five and have parking and everything else. Otherwise, you're just gonna make that commercial space so small that I, I can't make the commercial work.
Maybe the residential density, when combined with the commercial use, can be reduced by special permit.
That's a good idea.
Alright, I'm, I can live with that.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
I think we have to have some out here.
I also think that there should be something that says residential density shall be five dwelling units per acre, rounded down when necessary, because if you don't have a full acre, you can't get the five.
Right.
You don't want to be, you know, if you're, if it comes out to be 4.5, then you have, you always have to round down, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Because then, otherwise you're over, yeah, rounded down for partial units.
And I, not to throw a monkey wrench, but a true acre is 43,560.
Right.
In the zoning world, it's not planning world, the zoning world, it's 40,000.
Yes.
Right.
So, are we using a true acre, or are we using 40,000?
I would say the 40,000, that's usually the way the health, border health plays it in most towns play.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Does everyone agree with that?
So we need to get away from the word acre.
Yep.
Yeah.
Because we don't use that.
Yeah, okay, per 40,000. And, um, and we do specify the lot size as a minimum of 10,000, so we're talking about possibly a com, you know, we're talking about not necessarily a one lot development, but we're talking about the overall land.
I, I think the last piece that Gloria mentioned provides us with that flexibility, because I, I just didn't want us to get shoehorned in a corner and saying, well, this isn't gonna work. You only have 500 square feet in your commercial and you're putting all these residential units on there, I'm not buying that.
I think that's fine. So we'll, we'll allow that special permit out for reducing residential density when it's part of a mixed use project.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or just, why don't you say adjusting? Adjusting residential density.
Yeah.
Well, I would say reduce, because that's, that's when they're gonna come, why would we, why would we not be clear?
Okay.
Right? Because the, the only reason they're gonna come for a special permit is to reduce the density requirement that we've put out there.
Unless they want to build 12 units per acre and get their density bonus.
Exactly, yes. So we can go both ways, you can get it reduced, you can get it increased.
Well, I mean, I'm just taking a look at all the different things that we've seen come before us, properties that are shoehorning, or trying to shoehorn you so many restaurants in with so many seats and they don't have enough parking in, now we're trying to put a residential place on top of it, how's that gonna work?
Is it gonna encourage people to do that so that they reduce their payment in lieu?
See, I think we want to be careful.
But I think-
We just want to be careful.
I think you still have to do your payment in lieu.
Yeah.
But it'll be for a smaller number, so if you have a smaller, a lower residential density, then the number of units you're gonna be building are lower and your payment in lieu is gonna be lower.
But that'll, all has to get processed by special permit, yes, so we don't necessarily have to allow that. I, I mean, I just think the whole-
It makes sense on a case-by-case basis, someone will be able to show you plans, and you'll be able to see really quickly whether, you know, it's possible to get more units, or whether it's literally too squashed and they need to reduce the density. I think that's a reasonable approach.
Um, yes. Yeah, and remember, we're allowing that density bonus up to 12 dwelling units per acre, which is-
For 40,000 square feet.
I mean, that's a lot, and, and we're doing that for a reason, we're doing that for a couple of reasons. One, it is a good incentive to the developers, but two, our whole purpose in this was to allow as much density as possible, given all the parameters that need to be considered, because we want to encourage more housing development that is available to all income levels. And in, in mixed use, as well as in totally residential development. And I think it is good to remember, I think it was Bob who said it, I mean, we need to think of West Chatham as it actually is, and it's, there's not a huge amount of land, all the development, really all the development that'll take place there is gonna be redevelopment, probably sometime in, oops, in the not-too-near future, just because what is there now has viable businesses, the structures are not failing in any way, you know, they're good income, long-term businesses that are there, so, we need to be realistic that redevelopment might be a bit in the future, but we still wanna put in place zoning that allows redevelopment, that at least offers the opportunity to develop a greater density of housing as well as mixed use. So, I think that's why our, why we had that thing, a minimum of eight dwelling units. And that's why we were thinking that way. So, Arthur, did, were you bursting with something to say?
No, I'm, I'm feeling comfortable now, that, that this is gonna be doable.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so, Warren, did you have something? Yeah?
Always got something. Recognizing there's not a lot of land, I always take the long view, so 50, 60 years from now, there will have been some redevelopment. Now, currently, most of the residential redevelopment is on non-conforming lots, and you end up with a non-conforming proposal, which ends up putting something that's three times the size of what's there, uh, originally, as what gets built. If you take that general approach here and say, okay, something gets redeveloped in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, um, well, it's, you know, it's non-conforming most probably, currently, uh, and certainly, how does it then fit in, what are you permitted or restricted from doing? What are you permitted or restricted from doing? What we would like to have is that in, in the long run, when you redevelop an area here, we would like it to conform to what we are proposing for the zoning.
Correct.
I don't think we can require that, but that's certainly what we would want to have happen. And we certainly don't want, you know, a one-acre commercial property that's not multi-use to be retained or even expanded to become, you know, a strip mall as opposed to when redevelopment happens that it's nudged towards what we're trying to achieve here as if it was open space. And I don't know how we do that and if we can, but I, I throw it out there for redevelopment being in the long run, that's what's going to happen to the land mass in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. If you take a long enough view, what's there will be redeveloped somehow.
Yes.
Either replaced or hopefully made to be more in line with form-based zoning and our objectives and increased density and so on. As opposed to whatever might be permitted under the zoning bylaw, which we sort of have a rough idea what it's going to look like. What would be precluded under that if you were to redevelop a property? I throw it out as really the fatal flaw of what we've got in terms of residential zoning, at least in my view, that you can build almost anything on any lot in Chatham or the 70% that are all non-conforming because that's what people are doing. And we don't want that to happen in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
So is your question saying that once this zoning is implemented that the, the current, the lots will all form into, will all become pre-existing non, non-conforming? And then, yeah. So, and then how will that-
That's exactly what I'm talking about. Everything is pre-existing non-conforming. So what does that mean 50 years from now when you want to redevelop something?
Means you have to follow the zoning bylaw that's in place at the time. It probably won't be this in 50 years. What's the minimum lot size for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center?
10,000 square feet.
So does it make sense to drop it to 8,000 square feet? Because right now, five units per 40,000 square feet is 8,000 square feet a unit.
That would make sense.
Yeah. So that way, it's possible, so it's possible that you could get one unit on 8,000 square feet. So you could get a single-family home on a small lot.
But single-family homes are not permitted.
They don't permit single-family homes.
Yeah.
So how, so then a small lot would be-
They'd have to rezone the lot. If the lot was 8,000 square feet, they, we would-
They couldn't build on it unless they, unless they did the special permit for increased density. But then realistically, in 8,000 square feet, I don't know how many units they would get to do 25%. Yeah.
So, so can we go back to what Warren suggests?
Yeah, this is a big question.
So if, if, can we put in a provision that if you're non-conforming, the only thing that you can build is what you have and not any of this new stuff? I mean, how does that work?
Then we're not going to get anything new.
Mass general laws provides for grandfathering. So anything that's there is grandfathered.
It's grandfathered.
Don't use that term.
But that doesn't allow you to do anything you, how do we stop them from doing whatever they want because they were non-conforming before? I think that's the problem.
Pre-existing non-conforming goes automatically to special permit.
To the ZBA though.
The ZBA.
Which means that basically-
Because, yeah, and you don't, you don't want to prevent people from upgrading their properties, for instance, or, or stuff like that. So you don't want to, you don't want to take that right away from them.
No.
No, but what I'm really getting at is you would like the ZBA to have some guidance from this board when looking for a special permit to replace a grandfathered-
In an ideal world, that would be great. But I mean, the whole point behind the ZBA is to almost undo planning. You know, it's looking at like lots and circumstances on it. It is, on a case-by-case basis, to say, ah, you're non-conformant with, you know, with zoning or what the planning board wanted, but we'll, you know, let you do this anyway because you're already there. It's pre-existing. You want to add a dormer, go ahead.
But I, I just want to, I'm basically, Warren, I think you gave voice to something that's been nagging in the back of my mind for the past five years. That once this zoning is put in place, does it make every, every single lot there pre-existing non-conforming? And then for their redevelopment, when it does come time, 10 years from now or whatever, somebody wants to redevelop, they don't need, they won't need to use this zoning because they automatically fall into that category where it goes by special permit and they go before the ZBA. So that's our question.
Not for redevelopment. I think if they want to do work on their existing structure that's grandfathered.
Can you, can you- Oh, sorry. If they want to do work on their existing structure that's grandfathered, they would be able to do that. If they wanted to like redevelop it, then they would have to follow current zoning. So if someone had a single-family house on a 10,000-square-foot lot, or actually, let's say a single-family house on a 40,000-square-foot lot and they wanted to, you know, do updates or whatever, they can always do that. Pre-existing non-conforming, or maybe it's not even non-conforming at that point, or maybe it's a, it's a house that's on like 9,000. So it's an, it's an undersized lot, but it's already there. So if they want to do updates to that, if they want to increase their non-conformity, they can go to the ZBA and get a special permit to do that. If they want to redevelop the lot and do, you know, commercial or add another unit that isn't an ADU, then they would have to follow the new zoning.
Okay. So, so does that answer your question, Warren?
That goes a long way towards it.
All right.
But again, what you would like is that if whatever is done out there would be form-based zoning, so it would tend to fit in as opposed to not fit in because it doesn't need to conform. That, that was what I was getting towards.
There are still going to be situations where that lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure may not be able to meet the requirements of this new district, in which case they would need to go to the ZBA to alter pre-existing non-conforming structure, but they'd still have to go to the planning board for either the site plan review and/or this, the special permit, depending upon what they wanted to do. And in other worlds that I've been in, you had to go to the planning board first-
Yeah.
-before you could get your alteration to the pre-existing non-conformity. That way, you have the input from the planning board as to what from a planning standpoint, not a zoning standpoint, is acceptable.
I, I, I can see a scenario where somebody has a commercial building on there now. Flat, flat roof. They want to put a residential component on the top. Now, I can see that happening on some sites that are pre-existing there. They have an opportunity to add that residential component that you didn't have before. If they have enough parking, can they, you know, what's, what's the process that people are going to go through for something like that? And what board actually makes those decisions?
Right. Because you don't want to force them to like lift their building and move it closer to the street. Is that what you mean? Like there's a structure that's not conforming, but-
Right. I mean, I, I know some buildings there that are like that, that gee, I didn't realize could have a residential component. I could put a whole series of units. I mean, very much like the salon that had the rental apartments on top of it.
Which one was that? Samantha's?
Yes.
Yes, that used to be the food store.
Food store?
Yes.
And they have residential components on top of it? That could happen on an existing building there. We would want to encourage those residential units. Correct?
Yeah.
So can the, let me, so let me go through the current West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning because maybe it's as simple as putting in something that says the planning board can waive dimensional requirements for pre-existing structures and uses by special permit. Does that make sense? It might even say that or something.
You, you need to be careful only because for lawfully pre-existing non-conforming, the only board that's allowed to grant, that is the zoning board of appeals. It would be a very good question for town council. What is waivable? I know site plan review, the board can waive things. So can they continue to waive things? You know, because in some cases, if you have one-bedroom dwelling units, a lot of times you're going to have one car. You don't need two cars. Or you change it to 1.5, you know, parking spaces per unit instead of two so that it kind of evens out.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's, there's, there's ways to-
So that might be a question for town council.
And the site plan component review that's in the bylaw now, that still applies just the way, just the way it is, right?
Yes. Yes.
So, right, we can waive that parking if it, if it makes sense.
Yes.
And of course, it gives us with the, with the new bylaw, we're trying to provide link comping, shared parking as opportunities to create options for parking and not necessarily just force it in.
Okay. Great. But I think the big question is answered. Like in the case of a total redevelopment of the site, it would, the new zoning would apply and they would come before the planning board for site plan review. It would not go to ZBA for a special permit. That was the big question, right, Warren? Yeah? Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I will, I will put that new question to town council also.
Okay, that'd be great.
It's a good bit of information to have.
That'd be great.
Because if it is allowed, then we will have to put a little sentence somewhere in the zoning that allows the planning board by special permit to waive those dimensional standards.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. All right. So let's continue. I mean, are there, are there other questions on the board on the rest of what Gloria has drafted?
I like it.
Yeah, I like it too. How about other board members?
The last two bullet points. I'll take out where it says affordable because we're only talking about attainable housing.
Yes.
So that'll change.
Yes, I guess we made that decision, didn't we? So take out affordable every time. So there's quite a few times where you have to take it out. Questions from the board on the last two bullet points from Gloria?
Why are we taking it out?
Because we're not-
Because we're not doing any affordable units? We're requiring-
Well, we're not requiring it, that it be affordable, but it doesn't prevent somebody from making it affordable.
Okay. That's a good point.
Okay. Okay. All right. And I'm just looking at the rest of the questions. I think we've answered all these questions. The issue of year-round leases is going to be discussed with town council. Going to hope to find a solution for that. Are there any other questions from the board? Or I think we've vetted this enough. Gloria, do you feel we've vetted this enough that you have what you need-
I have tons of notes. You guys are the best.
To incorporate it.
A lot of like really good discussion and comments. I really appreciate it.
To incorporate this into the draft. Because I think what we want to do, what our goal was, was to vet all of this tonight, make decisions where we had to. I think we've done that. And next meeting, Gloria and Ryan are going to bring before us the completely finished, edited-
Drafted draft.
Yeah.
Final, so-called final draft. Right? And Gloria, I just, so we're in the position to do that now?
Yeah, I think so.
You feel good? Okay, great.
I do. I mean, we have the outstanding questions for town council, but other than that, I think I-
Yes.
I think I grasp what you're getting at.
Okay, great. Because what we want to do is take this final draft. It may not be absolutely perfect, perfect, but it is the final draft. And even at our next board meeting, we will have a listening and information session following our review of that final draft. We'll have the first listening and information sent, session for the community and we'll have a session like that at each of our regular planning board meetings. And then Ryan is also going to come up with a schedule to have some additional community outreach meetings, perhaps on a Saturday at the community center because there are a lot of people who can't come in the evening and so on. So we're basically just going to move to the next phase of this process and focus on community outreach. Although Ryan did remind me this afternoon that we've already done a large amount of community outreach with earlier iterations and different parts of this bylaw. So now it's just basically taking the whole package. But we do want to do that.
So, so this is going to be available for our meeting on the 25th of September? That's the date?
That's the-
Is that two? Yeah, absolutely.
Two weeks? Okay. All right.
Yeah.
And we only have one meeting in October because of Columbus Day weekend?
Is, I don't have the schedule in front of me.
That's what I have on my calendar. We only have the 23rd.
Oh, and I'm going to be, I think I'm out of town. But, yeah, I'm, I won't be here. But that's fine. Ryan can do it.
So we could even, I mean, would the board like to consider having another, scheduling a special meeting in October that's not on our usual date so that we'd have at least two community outreach meetings?
I, I, I think that would be really good if, if we can fit it in with everybody else's meeting schedules.
Yeah.
There's a lot of meetings in town.
I was just saying, if it's a rooms even available, right?
Yeah. So, great. So we'll, we'll ask Ryan to do that.
So we're talking about the week of the 9th then, correct?
I don't have-
Something like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yes, so we've, so we've got a meeting on the 23rd. Yes. We could do it even the week before. I think the week of the 9th would be better.
Oh, do you know what? I think that the select board is not planning to meet on Tuesday, the 10th. They're meeting on the 3rd and then they're on an every-other-week schedule. So you could potentially do it Tuesday, the 10th.
That would be great.
Okay, so you can verify, check that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I may be electronic, I may be away.
Okay.
Actually, I can check that right now because I have, okay, schedule emailed. Hold on one second.
You know, and Gloria, not to complicate things further, but I know when we get to community outreach-
Yeah, no meeting scheduled for October 10th.
Great.
The select board.
Great. So let's tentatively plan on a community outreach meeting on October 10th and then our regular meeting October 23rd. We'll also schedule a community outreach meeting. And then Ryan will come up with, help us come up with a schedule for some additional at the community center, maybe on a Saturday and so on.
Okay.
Like that. Good.